It really is a very infectious virus. Safety is the most important thing. Transmission is easy. And so when we talk about mitigation efforts for this virus, it is so important that we follow those mitigation efforts because we really do know that these things work such as wearing a mask, socially distancing, physically distancing. Those things do tend to work. And one of the things that I always share with people is that the risk of the virus, the risk of contracting the virus is based upon two things. Distance and duration. So for example, distance means am I within six feet of you? And we're six feet apart. I know in the school system, you're going to have kids six feet apart and going to monitor that physical distancing, but that is so important. If I'm six feet away from you, the chance of me contracting the virus from you is very low. The other, the other thing is duration. Am I with you for more than 15 minutes? Did we eat together? Did we live together? Did we drive together? Those things do impact your ability or the chance that you would get the virus. So when we talk about the school, I know that you're going to be distancing. And also I know that you're going to be able, where the kids are not in direct, in contact with each other for more than 15 minutes if they don't have to be. So I understand you're going to do some cohorting. And that's important to keep kids together in a group so that they're not exposed to other children throughout the day. I know that when you, when they come into the school system, they're going to come in distancing. And so duration and distance will be important. And they already have, the school board already have plans for that to help to do those mitigation efforts. The subject of masking, and I know this has become such a controversial topic. However, masking is crucial to the safety of the kids and the teachers and the other workers. The, and we don't want to forget the cafeteria workers. We don't want to forget the bus drivers. We don't want to forget those support departments, those support personnel that make it possible for them to teach your children. And so masking is so important. And one of the things that I, I would share with you is to get your children now to start wearing a mask, to get used to wearing a mask. Make it fun for them because masking and so forth. I don't feel comfortable going out without my mask. And one of the things that, and so it really is really, really important that the kids mask, that they do social distancing, they do physical distancing. And I'm just so grateful that for the children of Nahtuck Parish, that they have your leadership and are able now to go to school, learn and be safe. I can share with you that one of the things that our organization at the hospital, because I'm the chief medical officer there. I'm really not kind of in charge by the doctors, but I am the chief medical officer there. And we have had an uptick in our associates that have tested positive. But they're not testing, they're not getting COVID from the hospital. They're getting it in the community. We have put things in place that they, that our hospital is safe. So if you need care at our hospital, you can definitely come because we have put things in place to make our hospital safe. The same way with the school system. They have put things in place to make it safe. Your children are going to be more, going to be safer at the school because of the things that you've done, the practices that they've put in place, the policies that they've put in place. They're going to be safer here than they would be at home. I'm totally convinced of that because again, like I said, we've had an uptick in our community, but our associates, our employees are getting COVID from the community, not from the hospital. And I think it's going to be the same way with the children. Is that they're going to be so safe in this environment, that they're going to be safer here than they would be at Cousin Sue's house. And so I think you can be very comfortable coming to the school. Now, the one thing I do want to share with you is you will see some positive cases. That's without a, I mean, that is a given. You will see positive cases, but I really believe that it's going to be coming from the community. And don't panic when you get those positive cases. They have put things in, the school system have put things in place that even that is taken care of. So I'm excited for this school year for you. I really am. And I just believe that this is going to be a wonderful school year. This is unprecedented times, but your kids will be able to look back and say, you know what, I learned during COVID-19.
Well, thank you, Dr. Mason. And as you can tell, I'm taking my mask off now. Would you mind standing around for about a minute? Because I'm going to answer some other COVID related questions that really deal with the school district, but I'd love for you to chime in if you see an area of need. So some questions that came from you. When a child or teacher tests positive for COVID-19, will the whole class be sent home to quarantine? The answer to that is every situation is going to be different. Our system tells us to call the Office of Public Health, Region 7, and they will dictate what happens. And as Dr. Mason said, it's going to largely deal with duration, proximity and those type of things. What we're telling everyone though, is if we do everything we're supposed to, and that's including masking, disinfecting, et cetera, then really a best case scenario is we have a positive case and no one goes home except for that positive case. Now, there may be a time because of just different situations where because of the exposure that multiple people may go home in a classroom. But the idea is that one classroom may go home, but the whole school doesn't go home. Or one student may go home, but not the entire classroom. And that really is, it's not a black and white issue. It's going to be a case by case issue based on the context of the exposure. And that's going to be dealt with by Ms. Linda Page, our HR director. And she's doing a fantastic job of that. Second question was what protective measures do we have in place? We are going to provide face masks for every child and every adult in all the schools. That's going to be a reusable, washable mask. And then we also have disposable masks if we need those as well. We also have hand washing stations all around. We'll be encouraging hand washing. And we have those on the buses, all around the schools, et cetera. We also are encouraging social distancing. We have temperature cameras that will be set up in every school where students walk in and they will automatically have their temperature taken. And if it's an elevated temperature, they will be put in an isolation room until you as a parent can come pick them up. We know that 42% of our current students have decided to do virtual school. So we know we can keep numbers low. Forty-two percent of our students won't be there. So we'll be able to have class sizes that are much lower than even the minimum BESI guidance. We'll be utilizing static groupings. We also have increased funding for all schools to purchase only disinfectant and cleaning supplies. So schools have as, as little as $7,500 and as much as $12,500 based on their enrollment size. So we're doing a lot of things in regards to that. What is a static group? A lot of people have asked that question. A static group is a group whose composition does not change throughout the day. What happens if furthermore, when a teacher or student tests positive, how long do they need to be out? Well, the current CDC guidance, which is what we are going by, and Doc, tell me if this has changed even today. But a positive test means 10 days out with a caveat of 24 hours of no fever, assuming that that no fever is without medical assistance. From exposure to a positive case, it's 14 days of isolation. And the one thing we would say to employees as well is you have that, that need to do that, but a test, if you go to the Nahtuck Regional Medical Center Walk-In Clinic and you're covered by Office of Group Benefits, your test will be covered. So we encourage those who have a symptom to go get tested. Will the school or class be shut down if there's a positive case? As I said before.
Can I add something to that? And those guidelines are the CDC guidelines and those are the latest guidelines. And those are the exact same guidelines that we're using at our hospital.
And it's working.
And it's working. If you, 10 days after a positive test, you can come back to work with a mask. Because what we, what the CDC has found is that after nine days, there's no longer active virus that is infectious. So we're using those same guidelines at our hospital.
Okay, very good. Another person asks, will locker rooms be wiped down? Yes, everything that's a high frequency touched surface will be wiped down and will be cleaned. And we are, that is going to be a job of every person in the building, whether it's the superintendent or a student or whoever. We, we are going to rely on the professionals to make sure things are cleaned properly. But everyone's going to be involved in this and will be part of that, myself included. What happens if a student's mask breaks or drops on the floor and gets dirty? Like I said, we have replacements, but we also encourage people to bring extras just in case. You never know. I have one in all, in every room in my house, in my vehicle, in my office as well. If you were informed by the community that there's a positive test or exposure, what will you do? So we have to respect HIPAA. But if we hear that someone is saying, hey, you know, Mr. Eloy tests positive, then we would encourage that to be investigated. And we'll ask questions to those employees or those parents. And if we have, if it is a positive case, we will ask that employee or that student to isolate based on whether it was exposure or a positive test. That being said, we are encouraging, and we're putting it in a policy. It's not even encouragement. We are mandating that people report if they've been exposed or if they've had a positive case. So I guess the COVID portion, we'd like to wrap up. And I'd ask Dr. Mason one last question. Dr. Mason, in your professional medical opinion, not any of the politics, not any of the Facebook misinformation, but in your professional medical opinion, do you feel if we follow our plan, that a student can be safe in Nahtuck Parish?
Absolutely. I, again, I, as I shared with you before, your plan is so solid and so comprehensive. I, I've dealt with COVID and been kind of passionate. My hospital can tell you, I'm really passionate about this. So since March, I've been really, we have an incident command. We have a whole COVID team that I've been a part of. And so I'm really passionate about it. And we really have looked into safety measures. But I believe and am totally confident that the policies and procedures and the practices that you've put in place, if it is followed, will keep the children safe, the teachers safe, all the workers safe, and it'll be a great year. But I am totally convinced that if everything is followed, it's totally safe for us.
Well, thank you so much for coming to our little talk show, as we're calling it. But we appreciate it so much. I know you're very busy obviously with COVID-19 and just the regular practice of the hospital. But we can't thank you enough for coming out. Thank you so much. So our next topic is now going to be virtual school. And what we're going to do is, I know this is the hot topic besides COVID is virtual school. And we have given all that to Ms. Felicia Pinckney. She is, I guess you could in some ways say the director of the virtual schools. So she's going to come sit beside me. And she is going to answer all of your questions through a description and an explanation of all things virtual school. So please listen closely. I think this will answer many of your questions.
Good evening, Nahtuck Parish. We are pleased to be able to offer our students a full virtual learning option, 100% virtual for the 2021 school year. As our application deadline closes for home-based learning, we know that there are still many questions out there. And of course, we definitely want to make sure that those, that you have all of those answers. Of course, we know our virtual learning program has had to evolve over the last few weeks with the growing number of families choosing our virtual option. It is our goal to continue to provide a robust curriculum and learning experience to all Nahtuck Parish students. So there are a few components of our virtual learning program that I'll share with you today. In order to maintain a robust experience for all of our students, we will engage our students through the utilization of Google Classroom. The teachers in our district are working so hard to master Google Classroom as our district learning platform. Students will have a teacher or teachers for the content that they would have been being taught if they were in a face-to-face environment. We want to make sure that everyone understands that we are teaching the same content to our virtual learning students as our face-to-face students. It is our goal to keep instruction within the school. However, that will be determined, of course, by the number of students that we have sign up and commit to the virtual learning option. As virtual teacher decisions are made and schedules are set, families will of course be informed of how much time students will need to be on the internet per day. We are asking that every family plan to spend no less than at least one hour accessing the internet daily. We are asking that the internet be no less than 25 megabytes per second. It could be more as far as the hour depending on the grade level, but we are asking families to prepare for it to be no less than at least one hour. There are some families that may be in need of a hotspot. Those hotspots will be published, or at least the locations of those hotspots will be published in the upcoming weeks as our technology team works extremely hard to get our community ready for access to those hotspots. There will be a mixture, we want parents to understand, of synchronous, which is live instruction, and asynchronous instruction, which can be done more independently. We want parents to also understand, families to understand that we understand that it's going to be hard to access the internet sometimes during the day. So we will be working with families to determine virtual, virtual flexible scheduling for our students. We're asking that families visit our virtual, a draft at least of our virtual handbook that is already posted to our website under the Strong Start tab. And we're asking that while you're there, please visit our page of the handbook that is going to give parents so much information about the needed school supplies for our virtual students. We are giving families a two-week window option from the start of school to make the decision of do we need to go virtual or do we need to return? We really truly want to make sure that families have the opportunity to make the very best decision. There will be two checkpoints throughout the school year. October 28th and also January 20th, where student data, student progress can be assessed and parents and schools can make the decision on the best placement of students at that particular time. Students are allowed, and we want to repeat that, students in Nahtuck Parish are allowed to participate in extracurricular activities if they are virtual students. Also recently, the LHSAA, which is our Louisiana High School Sports Association, published the guidance that allows districts to basically make their own decisions about student participation in sports. Nahtuck Parish virtual students will be able to participate in all LHSAA sports. As of now, students will still be expected to take LEAP 2025 assessments in grades three through high school. Please remember that if you are a high school student, those assessments are required for graduation. We will of course let parents know when the schedule will be posted as far as taking these assessments, as we know that many of these cannot be administered virtually. All students with IEPs and 504s will receive services as dictated by those IEPs and 504s, particularly our desk students with occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, adaptive PE and counseling. We are asking for full support from all of our stakeholders as we make this transition to virtual learning. And we want you to know that we are always here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. Now turn it back over to Mr. Eloy.
Thank you, Ms. Pinckney. So I know there's a lot of questions about virtual school, but what I want to tell you is that we, as robust as this program will be, there's no educator I've talked to in the state or in the nation that believes that virtual or distance learning in general takes the place of face-to-face. So if there's any way that we can put you at ease, if there's any way that we can make you feel comfortable about coming to school, we highly recommend that you make plans to do so. Virtual is going to be great, but there's, there's no replacement for a teacher in front of the students. And also we want to add to that, that if internet isn't an issue, a consistent issue, then we also would highly encourage you to be face-to-face as well. So that leads us into our next topic, face-to-face school. So a lot of questions dealing with what face-to-face school looks like. Some of this is going to be dictated to us by which phase we're in. Currently, we're in phase two, but by the time school starts, who knows what phase we will be in? That's subject to the governor. So I'd like to start off by just going through your questions. Number one, will everyone have their temperatures checked daily? The answer to that is yes. Anyone who enters our school buildings will have their temperatures checked daily. And if you are a visitor, you will have your temperature logged and you will have to sign in. Number two, will absences still count? Per BESI, the BESI Board sets attendance guidelines. And currently, they have done no waivers for the 2021 school year. So as of now, attendance is still the same as it always has been. Another person asks, what will the class size be? We are going by the mandated BESI minimum standards. And those minimum standards are 25 students in a room irregardless of size at any one time. What that means is, is no matter how large the building is, it could be the size of a gymnasium or Parker Coliseum, you can only have 25 individuals in that room. And so what we are doing is we are ensuring not only that we're at that 25 level, but because 42% of our students are choosing virtual, we'll be able to come significantly under that, that number. And then also, for instance, our pre-K classes will be 20 and under as well. Can you explain the mask policy? So the mask policy as set by BESI that we have simply adopted because BESI is the governing body of elementary and secondary schools, masks will be required for all students third grade and up, including adults. For second grade and below, they are not recommending masks. And that's because they feel as though it's actually more detrimental because students at that age would tend to touch their face more if they had a mask on. And then also for language development of those students. So the question's been asked numerous times though, what if we have a serious medical condition and cannot wear a mask? Well, what we would do initially is we would troubleshoot with you to see if there's some alternative or some way you could still wear a mask. That would be the first, because we know there's different ways to wear a mask and things of that, and there's different masks and materials. The second thing we would do is to see if there's an alternative, perhaps a face shield. Although currently, the CDC does not recommend face shields over masks. So we would go to that only if we had to. And then our last possibility is not wearing a mask at all. And we know there's going to be issues where perhaps a student has a severe medical condition or in our, some of our students who have sensory issues cannot wear those masks. But we're going to work with our team to try to troubleshoot that as much as possible. And there's not a solid answer. It's a flow chart of what we will do next. We will again try to work with you, then go to other alternatives. And then our last option will be no mask at all. Will schools purchase cleaning supplies? Yes, we are, your principals at all your schools are in the midst of purchasing cleaning supplies. That we have vetted vendors that are able to supply those consistently to us and the proper supplies that we know kill the virus and protect your students. Will teachers receive a cleaning checklist? Many people have said, you know, one person's clean is not everyone's clean. Especially when we're talking about killing a virus, there needs to be specifics. So if you go to our Strong Start plan on the website, there is a teacher in a custodial checklist of what needs to be cleaned and how often it needs to be cleaned. Those mainly are high-frequency touched areas and disinfecting those areas where a student might touch more often than others. Will teachers have to clean their static group, their static room if they have a static group in that room all day? The answer to that is just because it's a static group in there all day does not mean that we will not clean. We will still need to clean that room in the high-frequency touched areas throughout the day. Basically, what we're saying is we're not trying to take any shortcuts in this. Just because you have a static group, we still need to have a high level of cleanliness in those rooms. Another person asks, can my child bring wipes to school to clean their own desk? The answer to that question is no. And the reason behind it is because students have different allergies. And we can't have different cleaning products coming in and possibly exposing those students to, to different reactions. Also, there's only certain products that have been vetted by LDOE and LDH to be effective. So please let us as the school district and as your schools to supply those cleaning supplies so that we can make sure that they're the proper supplies and they're not hurting anyone in the process of trying to clean. Because as we know, there's many students who have many allergic reactions to all sorts of different chemicals and products. Number nine, can you talk about the school system's ventilation systems? We have had this discussion. And currently, the current guidance from the CDC is that our current ventilation systems as they stand are sufficient and meet the guidelines for ventilation in terms of COVID-19. Another question was asked, what about the, the filters? Should we put, should we change filters more often than we currently do? The answer to that question is current CDC guidance says you do not. You do your normal maintenance on those filters and you replace them as you normally would. And that's what we're going with. So we have had the conversation, but everything in that regard is basically staying the same. What is your stance on airflow in classrooms? So what we're telling classrooms, if you have a window and, and you can pull it up, we would encourage teachers to do that. The more airflow you can receive in the classroom, we think that that's better. So if you can have a door open or a window open and increase that flow of air, we think that's a great idea. It's not something that every classroom will be able to do, but where possible, we would encourage it. Here's another good one. Will students in face-to-face share supplies? The answer to that question is no. Many times, you know, we think of cooperative learning. We think of how that takes place. And that means sharing supplies and sharing space. And the way school will look is going to look very different. Students will not be sharing scissors and pencils. They will have their own supplies. So that way, there's not any transmission through the touching of objects and things of that nature. And then anything that might be something that is shared, maybe it's a computer or some sort of device like that. Or that would be a high-frequency touched area. So in between usage, the teacher would be responsible for cleaning that. But as we've said before, the, we will be one-to-one devised. So there's really no need even for that to, to be utilized by multiple students. Will my student be allowed to play at recess? We feel very strongly that academics are important, but also the social emotional piece is very important. Students need an outlet to be able to get out their energy and to play with friends. So there will still be recess. But when recess occurs, it would need to be in the static groups. And so in those static groups, we would not want students to go across static groups. So they could go outside. They could go outside and they could participate in traditional recess. Although the caveat to that is those static groupings outside would need to be prevented from intermingling with each other. And so recess will probably be a lot of running around and things of that nature in between the static groupings. It won't be getting on playsets and, and intermingling with the class across the hallway. And that would only be able to have that, that multiple static groupings if it's outside. If we're inside, you could not have static groupings in the same room unless you had partitions in a gymnasium or something of that nature. So to answer your question, yes, there will be recess, just differently. Can I lower my mask? This question is being asked quite often. And what I would say is I'm going to read you the BESI verbiage. And that BESI verbiage in their minimum guidance is you have to wear the mask to the best extent possible. Meaning, in our interpretation, at times, students may need to lower their mask. Maybe they're short of breath or maybe they, they just need a break. But when that happens, that needs to be done away from others, socially distanced. And it only needs to be done for short periods of time only. And that would be at the discretion of the classroom teacher who would, you know, say, of course, you can go to that area over there, remove your mask for a moment and do it for a short time period. Can my student use the water fountain? If not, what will they do? We are getting rid of water fountains, shutting them down. And we are replacing them with no-touch bottle fillers. Students will be allowed to bring a clear water bottle and they can fill that up. And they'll, the logistics of that will be taken care of at the school level because we don't need students going in and out of classrooms filling up water bottles. But the schools will take care of that and they'll have specified times when they can do that. And then they'll be allowed to carry those water bottles throughout the day. How will bathroom breaks work? So a lot of this discussion of things that are very granular and happen during the school day will be handled by schools on an individual basis. And one school is probably going to look somewhat different from other schools as long as they follow that minimum guidance. That minimum guidance would mean that we would want bathroom breaks scheduled to reduce static group intermingling and interaction. Students will wash their hands each time. And that's something we've always wanted to happen, but obviously we'll pay closer attention to in today's world. There's also disinfectant stations throughout the hallways that we would expect to be used after bathroom breaks as well. But the logistics of the bathroom breaks, when they will occur, how often they will occur, will be a school-based decision. Again, allowing that they follow that minimum guidance. So another question comes in about classroom sizes in states. Can we get lower? And the answer to that is we are going to attempt to make classroom sizes as small as possible. And one of the benefits of virtual school with 42% of our students choosing it, we believe that in many cases, we can get classroom sizes to possibly below even 15 students per class, depending on the school and depending on the grade level. But we are looking at the numbers. We're very positive that we can get those numbers significantly down. To give you an example, right now, we have close to 600 students at Nahtuck Central who've chosen virtual. Nahtuck Central has around 1,200 students normally. If you have 600 who've chosen virtual, If you have six hundred who've chosen virtual, now you're at six hundred, and they'll be doing an A-B schedule. So at any one point, they'll only have three hundred students at school per day on a campus the size of NACIS Central. That allows for classroom sizes to be significantly lower than normal. But again, that twenty-five is the minimum guidance. So that's a great segue into how will the hybrid schedule work for for the nine-twelve students? So it's an A-B schedule. Monday will be a completely virtual day for all students. And students will then either be on an A schedule, which will mean they'll come to school Tuesday, Thursdays. Or on a B schedule, meaning they'll come Wednesday, Fridays. That will be determined by the school based on alphabetical order first. And then we'll make allowances for students who live in the same homes, but perhaps don't have the same last name or things of that nature. So we will work with the families to make that as flexible and as accommodating as as possible. Teachers will come to school every day. And that's because even when a student is not there on that virtual day, teachers will be providing that virtual component when students aren't there. So what will a hybrid day look like for a student? Well, it'll be an extension of their previous learning when they were in face-to-face. Some will be synchronous, some will be asynchronous, but all of it will be an extension of the previous day's learning when they were face-to-face. So that leads us into transportation. Transportation changes majorly from phase one to two to three. And transportation has dictated a lot of these plans because if you can't get kids to school. Then it's a difficult thing to to do the rest of the logistics. In phase one, we can only have twenty-five percent of the students on the bus, phase two fifty, and phase three seventy-five. So the first question comes in and says, how will you ensure our busing numbers are below twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five percent? Well, the easy answer to that is we're doing a few things. Number one, with virtual forty-two percent again, and with the high schools being hybrid, that allows us to get easily below that number. But the other thing we're asking, and I'm asking you first now on this town hall, is we are encouraging people who are able to bring their children to school in their own personal vehicle. We are encouraging you to do so. We cannot mandate that because, you know, transportation is a right afforded to you. But we would ask if you're able to help us in this because bottom line is what we feel the the philosophy behind all of these measures is teamwork. That's teamwork within the schools and teamwork with the community to make this school year happen. So again, we'll be able to get far below that fifty percent capacity and seventy-five percent in phase three. Will there be temperature checks before students get on the buses? These, the answer to this question is no. And many of you may be questioning the logic there, but LDOE has told us that that doesn't need to happen. There's a lot of issues that transpire if a student tests positive before they get on the bus. They then can't get on the bus. But then what if mom and dad have already left for work and a bus driver can't simply leave them at the bus stop? So instead, what we're doing is we're saying, hey, you're on the bus, you're still going to be masked up if you're third grade and above. The bus driver will have a mask. We will have windows down to increase airflow. And we will be socially distancing as much as possible on the bus. But again, we'll have small numbers on those buses as well. So the next question I already answered, but will students wear masks on the bus? Yes, they will. How will students be seated on the bus? Students who live in the same household can be seated together. Everyone else, we will socially distance as much as possible. Are bus drivers mandated to have the windows down for airflow? The answer to that is yes. Will the bus driver be wearing a mask? Yes, the bus driver will be wearing a mask at all times. When a student first enters, the the bus driver will make sure they have their mask on. And then the student will also have, there will be a hand cleaning station on the bus that the student will partake in as they enter the bus as well. And then finally, someone asks, will after-school activity buses still happen? And the answer to that is yes, those after-school activity buses will still occur. The next section is our cafeteria. Feeding is going to be different this year, but it is something we are obviously very committed to because it's it's something that is so integral to a student's day. To all of our days, being able to have proper nutrition. I first want to say thank you to our food service workers who have been doing so much work for us over the spring and then continuing in the summer. But the first question I ask is, is there enough food service manpower to handle at each school? What I would tell you is we are always looking for qualified food service workers and we could always bolster those numbers. Because at times, we do have shortages. So if you're interested, I would highly recommend contacting Ms. Linda Page. Will in-school students eat in the classroom or cafeteria or maybe even at a table set up outside? So the answer to that question is that students need to, excuse me, I'm looking for my water. Sorry, I'll get it in a second. The answer to that question is students have to be more socially distanced when they're eating. And the reason for that is obvious to everyone. You can't wear a mask while you're eating. So if you can't wear a mask while you're eating, socially distance distancing becomes more of a necessity. So what we're doing is we're encouraging principals to use any room that they need to eat in. More than likely, that's going to be the classroom because it makes the most sense. But how will they get their food? What we're looking at is in most cases, students will do a grab-and-go within their static group. Meaning they will go through the lunch line, grab a styrofoam shell that includes their meal. And they will then take that meal back to their classroom to eat. In between those static group lunch line services, there will be a quick cleaning of high-frequency touched areas. And then the next static group will come in and bring their shells back to their classrooms. The next question is, can I go eat with my child? Unfortunately, as much as we love our Thanksgiving and and Christmas activities where students can have parents come in. We will not be having those this year. And that's out of an abundance of caution for all the students. So no, parents will not be eating with their students this year. If in-school kids eat in the classroom, how will food be distributed to them? As I mentioned, that's going to be a grab-and-go situation where they take their food in a closed container. Thank you, Ms. Page. Where they take their food in a closed container and they take it back to their room to eat in that room and then we'll clean up afterwards. What will be the process for virtual students and hybrid students picking up lunch? Will parents and guardians have to pick up during designated time prior to school in students to start being served? Each school is going to communicate that to their virtual students. But base, the basic general premise is virtual students will pick up meals every day from their school, not from another school, from their school that they're enrolled in. And that will occur prior to the traditional lunch period. And what that does is it allows our cafeteria workers to provide lunches to the hybrid and virtual students and then still have time to work a traditional lunch shift. So that will be daily, and again, that will be communicated to you. Now on to our larger section, miscellaneous questions. Will uniforms still be required? For those of you who tuned in to two board meetings ago, the answer to that question is yes. The uniforms will still be required, but there is an extended grace period that goes throughout the entire month of September. And that allows students in schools to make sure that students have the proper uniforms. In the meantime, until they've gotten that proper uniform, they need, would need to wear possibly jeans and a spirit shirt or something of that nature until they can get their uniforms settled. As soon as they have their uniforms, though, they would then be required to start wearing uniforms. So I want to be very clear on that, that there is a grace period. But ninety-eight percent of students, if not higher, will be wearing their uniforms on day one of school. And as soon as, whether it's parents or school administrators fix that situation or address the situation, they will then be made to wear their uniforms. Question two, great question. How will we finish the, how will we handle the unfinished learning of students across the district who have been out of school for so long? Well. Excuse me. What we, what what I can tell you is that much of our professional development, in fact, the majority of our professional development has dealt with that specific issue. How do we deal with unfinished learning that did not occur in the spring? And so what I would tell you is our curriculum team has been hard at work with that. Our teachers have been hard at work, our principals have been hard at work. So that is going to be the focus of when your students come back to school, whether it's virtual or face-to-face, is dealing with that unfinished learning. And I could probably spend hours speaking specifically just on what that entails. But that's a lot of pedagogical question, answers and things of that nature. The other thing I would say is we have done summer school, and that's been hugely successful. And then also for our qualified students in the desk department, we have done ESY. So those three things together, we feel as though we've addressed things, but that's going to also be addressed in every classroom. In every school in the entire district. What is school going to do to do to promote social skills and physical play in phases two and three? We are still going to have PE. It will look differently, but we feel strongly that students still need to have PE and we will still be having recess. So we do not want to have a situation where students in a room for seven hours, looking at the same wall, the same individuals. We want to, where possible, where we can safely do it, provide that ability to still socialize within the static groups. And also get energy out through PE and recess. What are we doing in regards to mental health? This is something near and dear to my heart. I think we have to address the mental health component. We should be addressing this no matter what, but with COVID, I think the the it's become an exponential issue. What I can tell you is Ms. Jennifer Ingram here at the school district is dealing with that specifically. That's virtually her entire job right now is dealing with social emotional well-being of students. We have created a helpline. If we have any students or teachers or staff who feel that they are having a social emotional crisis, we have an email. Again, that's helpishere@nat.k12.la.us. That's completely something that goes to only our social emotional team. We want people to be able to reach out and say, hey, I'm struggling. Hey, I'm having anxiety. Hey, I'm depressed. And they can do that in a safe environment. We're also going to be doing a screener for every student, whether they're virtual or not, that assesses their social or emotional. Levels to see if they are in crisis or what needs to be done for them to address their needs. We're also giving specific guidance to teachers on how to respond if they experience a social emotional issue in the classroom, whether it be virtual or otherwise. And then we are also implementing a social emotional curriculum across the district that will happen on on a daily and weekly basis in classrooms. To ensure that our students are as healthy in that area as possible. Another question, parents are asking that we know there's a lot of supplies ordered and we know we've pushed back school. What are you going to do if these items don't arrive on time? So I can tell you, the items that that this person specifically references are the infrared cameras, which are now in our warehouse. And they are being set up in the coming weeks. So we know we have those. I was reminded before this meeting started that we will have a, our water fountains delivered in one week. The only item that we feel as though, and I'm sorry, we also have had all of our PPE masks, et cetera, delivered as well. The only item that is a possible variable is the cases for our newly ordered and delivered iPads. If those do not arrive on time, though, we do have contingency plans in place. And enough devices already available that we would be able to keep going. That would not be a stumbling block for us, but we do anticipate that hopefully those will still be in before September. But again, contingency plans in place. This question asks, why is NACIS Paris having K through eight attend school five days a week? Whereas nine through twelve is only doing the hybrid schedule? So let me just tell you that that was a busing capacity issue. And we we quickly realized that we could not provide the busing that we needed. If all the students in the entire district were going hybrid, or I'm sorry, were going face-to-face. The other issue we looked at there was the fact that high school students can stay home alone. Legally speaking, a fifteen-year-old can stay home alone. A six-year-old cannot. So we didn't want to overburden families with the need to figure this out when both parents were working. And they would then have students who were five, six, seven, eight years old staying at home alone. So that was our thinking there. We tried every avenue possible to make as many people satisfied with the plan as pop, as we could. But unfortunately, in these situations, there's always going to be those who whose needs were probably not met. Because we're looking at fifty-six hundred students and not the one. Question seven, I'm a parent of a special needs child and I need to know if masks will be required for students. Most special needs children can't wear masks and would have to use virtual option if they are required. So when we look at these students, you know, we have to accommodate them based on the the ADA. We have to make sure that their IEP is followed. And so when you speak about maybe a student who has autism and they have sensory issues and they cannot wear a mask. What we would first do is we are getting with OT, PT, speech and other service providers and the parents. To initially just have a conversation of what what is possible, what's not possible, and try to troubleshoot that with you. Wear a mask is possible, we're going to try that first. When we have to go to the next level, it might be a face shield with social distancing. When that's not possible, we want to to still troubleshoot and say, okay, well, is that an issue where it needs to be virtual? Or is this something we can do to social distance to a greater degree? But we want to be mindful of not treating these students as other, as making them feel isolated or or pushed aside because of this masking issue. So we will try everything within the legal guidance and within our power to make these students a part of the day. While while at the same time, keeping them safe and keeping their peers safe. I have talked with Ms. Bennett and they are already on top of this. They have ordered a clear mask for their speech, their OT and their PT and their hearing impaired. So that way, students can read lips and and also interact with them in a more traditional manner. They are also preparing social stories for our students with autism, so they can start preparing those students for wearing a mask. Because as we know, some students in the desk program, they struggle with change in routines and procedures. So we are already working on those things to to acclimate them to this possible change. Question eight, and we've somewhat answered this, but I want to, I think it's worth reiteration. Will masks, will children be required to ma, wear masks all day? Or are they just worn to and from classrooms? The guidance from BESI states this, and I'm reading this verbatim. While inside the school facility, all adults and students in grades three through twelve must wear a face covering to the greatest extent possible and practical within the local community context. What we're saying there is, to the best, greatest extent possible and practical means that there are certain times during the day where you may have a mask break, as we referenced earlier. But we are encouraging principals, teachers, students, et cetera, to wear the mask for as long as possible. We all know that there will be breaks in this, but we want to take those breaks in a way that's still responsible, that still guarantees safety. And if you're not wearing the mask, that you ensure that you have six feet social distance. Because I want to remind you, when a student does test positive. The rest of the class and whether they go home or if they stay is going to be dependent on how closely we follow these guidelines. Question nine, are the options of starting school virtually and face-to-face later not an option? What about alternating classroom days and virtual learning from the survey we took? So I do want to tell you. That the school board is considering virtual school, but I want to tell you a few things about that virtual school option. Number one, there's a major connectivity and equity issue. When we talk about students in this district, thirty percent of them do not have consistent internet access. So if we were to go full virtual, that thirty percent of students would not be receiving education in the same way that their counterparts with internet would. So that's first. Secondly, as I mentioned before, we must recognize that as far as instruction goes, face-to-face is superior to other options. So as long as, as Dr. Mason said, as long as we can do things safely, we need to encourage students and families to take that face-to-face option first. Question ten, what resources do teachers have for technical and or software issues they may experience? Question 10, what resources do teachers have for technical and/or software issues they may experience? Number one, we have an amazing IT staff and that's why we're able to be remotely talking to you right now via YouTube and Facebook and all that fun stuff. So the IT staff can field questions at any time and they've been doing that. We would like that filter to kind of go through, you know, teachers to principals, then to the IT staff so we don't overwhelm them. But we can also say that we believe that at every school, there will be a teacher who is sufficiently trained to a higher level on Google Classroom, that most of those issues can be troubleshoot at the local level. But when things occur, we want to encourage those teachers to be able to reach out to their principal and to the IT staff. I love this next question. What does the learning curve look for students and teachers? So the learning curve was large, I'm not going to lie to you. And that's part of the reason we pushed back school. But one of the reasons we did summer school was, number one, we knew students needed it. But we also knew that this would be kind of a practice run for what virtual school would look like. And it has been wonderful. I know Ms. Rochelle and Ms. Erickson have been hard at work with summer school and they have been writing a laundry list of technical and delivery issues so that we can improve those things and prevent them from happening in the new school year. So I think the learning curve is slimming down. It's shortening and that's because we're getting experience. We're also getting more training. But I sat in on a teacher's classroom the other day, Ms. Morris. She teaches math and I was amazed at her ability. But I was also amazed with the young man's ability in that classroom. So I am confident that the, a lot of the worst-case scenarios that many of us are playing out are just that, they're worst-case scenarios. And our students and our teachers on a daily basis are surprising us. So I would say the learning curve is getting smaller and smaller. Is there any new guidance from NPSB on how attendance and at-home learning will be handled for in-person students required to quarantine? So attendance will still count. Bessie has given no waivers in regards to that. With that being said, the way we've set up virtual is if a student goes home, whether it be COVID-related or otherwise, they would be able to continue their lessons through Google Classroom. And so what I would say to you in regards to attendance is as long as we have that option available where they can go home and continue working, we are not going to allow a student to fail purely on COVID-related absences. We will work with families to make, as long as students do their part and don't go home and do nothing, we will work with them to make that a non-issue. Question 13, I am a district, and I promise you, we only have a few more unless we have some questions from the audience that I need to be informed about, okay? I'm getting the no on that one. Question 13, I'm a district employee. Will I have to take sick leave if I'm exposed? If you go home due to COVID or due to anything, you would take sick leave. But let me tell you, there are 10 federal sick days related to COVID. If you utilize those 10 sick days, those do not count against the 10 days you will already be getting from the district like you get already. Furthermore, you will also, if you've accrued sick days, you will have those available to you. But this is not a Naginisch policy, this is a state policy that everyone's utilizing. If you are sick, you will take sick leave. If you are quarantined, you will take sick leave. But again, if it's COVID-related, you will first use those 10 federal days and it will not affect your current sick leave unless you go over those days. Question 14, how did honors placement occur within the standardized testing in places? How did honors placement occur without standardized testing this year? I won't go into detail in this. What I would do is redirect you to our addendum, COVID-19 addendum in the pupil progression plan that was passed this previous spring. There was an addendum that referenced how honors would be decided and that is in that plan and you can go on our website and find that. But it was other data points without the standard-based testing. Question 15, can students participate in athletics, PE, and band if they are virtual and hybrid? The answer to that is yes. I know Ms. Pinkney said, mentioned that in hers, but I want to reiterate that you can participate in all those groups. What about band? During Phase 2, there are limitations to what band cannot do. In fact, many times, in many situations, this is going to become a music appreciation class because you're not able to do wind instruments and things of that nature where you're putting your mouth and, you know, blowing wind into the instruments and things of that nature. The last question I have today is can I walk my child to the classroom? So as you all know, teachers report on August 24. Students will report in what we're calling a soft start on August 31. It will be communicated to you what day your student will go to school that first week. We have told principals to divide their population into 1/5, 1/5, and so on. You will only go to school face to face one day that week. On that day, for our pre-K kindergarten, first grade students, if you are a parent and would like to walk your student to class, as long as you are temperature scanned and are willing to wear a face mask, you can take your student to class during that week. After that week, we will not have parents entering into classrooms and things of that nature. And we're also encouraging, if you do need an appointment with a principal or a teacher, that you give them notice either via phone call or via email to make sure that that happens. I'm sorry, I'm getting a message here? Okay, so we have 20 minutes of battery, which I think is an excellent time to just let you know that we are committed to this being the safest start. I am having dreams and I know the team is having dreams every night of all the minute details. But one of the things, many districts, many superintendents reach out to people and they say, oh, please give us input. And then that input is kind of taken and put to the side. And that means that people aren't really willing to give their input the next time because they feel like they weren't listened to. We have looked at hundreds of your questions. We have looked at surveys. We have looked at Facebook comments and social media and all these things. We want you to participate in this. We know in this hour that we have not answered all your questions. And I'm saying to you all that I'm willing to do this again. We can do this again next week if we have another set of questions come in. We also know that all the questions that we weren't able to get to tonight, we're going to put in an FAQ that's going to be available to you Friday on the Naginisch Parish School Board website and also going to be shared via our social media platforms. But please work with us in this. If there was a question that you didn't have answered, I would ask you, don't fuss about it on social media, shoot me an email. My email is grant.eloy@nat.k12.la.us. But if you get any email at this district office, you can email those folks and they'll get it to me. You can email Ms. Pinkney with the virtual school. You can email Ms. Susan Horn with curriculum. Ms. Page, who's our COVID person. You can email any of these folks and they will answer your questions. You can also submit questions to our Naginisch Parish School Board Facebook page and those questions will be answered as well. We want to be as transparent as possible. We want to make this the most robust start to a school year ever. We're in this together. We, our highest priority is to be safe. And I would not be sending my own children to school. I would not be coming to work every day. I would not be supporting my wife and her going to work every day at Provinçal if I didn't believe that if we follow these standards, we can do it properly and we can do it safely. I've talked to Dr. Brumley many times. I've talked to many doctors across the state. If we do this in line with our plan, which means teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, students, if we do our plan the way it's written and live that, your students will be safe. We're committed to making this happen. Please reach out to me. Thank you so much. I hope this was helpful. But if you need more information, please reach out to us and we can schedule another one of these or we can answer your questions individually. I thank you. And with that being said, I'm going to end our first town hall and let you get to dinner.